Did you?
Yeah.
Did you iron it?
No.
Oh geez.
I did about five loads.
We can just license cats and birds.
You took Ross's, but you got your own.
Shh. Yeah, I kept my own.
We'll balance the budget.
Soon as Commissioner Richardson gets settled in here, we'll start.
Why not?
Tell him to hurry.
Mr. Bott, how are you?
I don't know.
Evening, Ross.
Good morning.
Evening.
You can put that one on the back table.
Okay, we will start the meeting. This is the, a special meeting of the Grand Travers County Board of Commissioners. Today is Thursday, January 26, 2012. It is a little after 7:00 PM, and we're on the second floor of the commission chambers. And if you have a cellphone, if you can place that on vibrate or silent, we would appreciate that. And I will call this, and the purpose of this meeting is to do a review of the strategic plan that we currently have in place, 2010 to 2012, to get a status report on that, and then move forward with our new three-year strategic planning process and issues that will be, that John Sykes, our planning director and staff, will help us proceed with this evening. And then hopefully at the end of the meeting, we will have the items and a prioritization that John can go back and help prepare a draft for us to review. And again, John Sykes will be leading us in that. We also have joining us, along with the county commission, our finance officer, Dean Bott, the treas, county treasurer, Bill Rokas, and our county administrator, Dennis Alloia, here as well. And Commissioner Wheelock is running late, I'm sure, due to his business activities. So with that, we'll call this meeting to order. Before we do the roll call, I will, since it's not out here, I will ask the board indulgence and stand, and we can, and I'll ask Commissioner Richardson if he can lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we'll have the clerk do the roll call, please.
Commissioner Fleese.
Present.
Gilman.
Here.
Hensel.
Yes.
Lemko.
Here.
Maxbauer.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Thomas.
Yep.
Wheelock.
Got to hear you.
Chairman Inman.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. The next item is a public comment, and we will ask the clerk, he must have just come on over here again, this microphone is, is not hooked up, to read the rules of public comment. Linda?
Let's use your chair. Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. A, any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. B, no person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter, excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. One, chairperson may at his or her discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
Okay, you've heard the rules that clerk has outlined regarding public comment, and there will be a second public comment towards the latter part of the meeting. Does any member of the public wish to make any public comment at this time to the Board Hearing none, we will close public comment, and we will move on to the 2012 work plan discussion and development. On your desk, you have the agenda as well as the printed 2010-2012 strategic plan. And I will let John Sykes, if you can introduce yourself to the folks in the audience and the people watching us, and then lead us through this process, please.
Okay. Good evening, my name is John Sykes. I'm the Planning and Development Director for Grand Travers County, and I'm going to be functioning as a facilitator to assist the County Board of Commissioners in this miniature strategic planning process. I would just at least start off by saying that the focus here is more of a work plan for 2012. The strategic plan, which is available on the county website as well as in the county administration office, is a, is a long-term strategic plan from 2010 to 2012. And instead of going through and amending that and redoing that entire process at this juncture, is really more focusing on a work plan for 2012. So it's, it's really an opportunity to identify what are the priorities for the county board for this year, and determine which are those things that are most important and are going to take precedent in the coming months. The, the strategic plan itself is probably a document that the Board of Commissioners will want to seriously consider and update come the beginning of 2013. And at that point is when that, that document should probably be updated. The current work planet, or the work plan that you had for 2011 outlined very specific objectives. The strategic plan is more goal-oriented, where there are seven distinctive goals that are identified. Objectives are really those action items that are kind of subsets, or those items that you are trying to work through that are leaning towards those seven particular goals. And I'm just gonna, for the benefit of our audience here, is just read through the seven goals, and if you look on the wall back there, you'll see, I've just kind of highlighted a couple key words. But the goal one, starting at the left side, is preserving the safe, a safe and healthy environment. Number two is the safety of the community. Number three is really about how to help or improve the health and economic well-being of all people of the community. Goal four is collaboration with other units of government on common issues. Goal number five is increased efficiency and effectiveness through risk-taking and innovation. Number six is about easy access to government services. And finally, number seven is about fiscal responsibility by, by the county.
Just a clarification, we had a brief discussion on this in terms of administrative meeting before, prior to setting the date on this, and given that the strategic plan goes through 2012, and that we will be having a change as of February 15th in county administration, and going through a search process, that we felt probably bringing in the new county administrator and engaging that particular person for the 2012 work plan that we will establish, and setting the stage for the three-year strategic plan when that person arrives, is probably a better method than just us going into the three-year, three-year process, and then extracting out, out of the three-year process what we think would be highlighted for 2012. And so, on your desk, as a part of, on page three, you have the Grand Travers County Board of Commissioners 2000 work plan that was adopted by the Board of Commissioners, so we had board priorities and countywide priorities. And they were kind enough to list all the accomplishments for 2011 in your packet as well. So, John, is it my understanding that you would begin the process by reviewing the status report for 2011, and then we would move on to what Commissioners feel are the issues for 2012, and then that's when we get into our card situation? Is that how you would see that going?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, absolutely. What, you know, I think you have in front of you, like Commissioner, or Chairman, you mentioned, you have the 2011 accomplishments, which were prepared by the various departments within the county, and then you actually have your 2011 actual work plan. And that is something that you, if you notice, there are some objectives that were achieved in terms of, in 2011, the health services building project is one that is moving forward. The housing programs have been assessed and realigned with the, with the county, and that has commenced in the beginning of this year. So there are some things that have been achieved, but then there's also some things that you set out in 2011 that you didn't achieve, and that's, you know, that's typical of a work plan, you're not going to be able to accomplish everything. But this is an opportunity to, to look back, to see if you want to carry some of those same objectives forward, as well as evaluate new ones. I'm not going to really go through the list of, of the accomplishments, you have them there from the various departments, but I would suggest looking at the different board priorities and the priorities you set for on a countywide basis, to see if you want to continue those forward. And as Chairman Inman mentioned, really what we're going to want to do here is go through this process of identifying what are your priorities. We're going to kind of do a round-robin process where we'll give you some time to write down your items on the sheets of paper that have been provided for you. We will then basically go around on a round-robin basis and, and allow each Commissioner to introduce their idea. We'll post it up under an appropriate goal that's up on the wall there, and as we go through that, there's opportunities to align them where there's common, common interest or common elements to those particular objectives. I would suggest that when you go through this process, that when you think of an objective, think of something that is measurable. It's important to understand that if you were going to achieve the objective, at what juncture, and anywhere in that process of implementing that objective, can you stand back and say, have we completed it, or have we not completed it? Are we halfway done, or are we three-quarters way done, or whatever? And there's different ways, obviously, to gauge completion, but I think that's important because then that will identify whether you've been successful in some of the work that you've wanted to achieve. At this point, I, unless you want to go into some details of the 2011 work plan, I would be more inclined to kind of start going through and identifying objectives for 2012, and if we should give some time for Commissioners to come up with those ideas.
Well, the only thing I would suggest is, or just make mention, is that now would be the time, if Dean or if Dennis have any remarks they would like to give us regarding the 2011 work plan, highlights, suggestions that they may have for things that they want us to continue to move forward on from a county operations standpoint, and any other suggestions regarding what we have listed for 2011, if they have any remarks regarding that, before we start the 2012 process. I think, you know, if they have any input, I mean, now would be the time to do that.
I, I really don't at this point. If there were questions, I would certainly entertain them and try to answer them, but as John, the one thing I would add is, it's not, I guess uncommon, that we have not completed some of the things on, on the work plan. One of the ones that we did spend some time on was the results-based or priority-based budgeting. Obviously, we did take a look at that, and I thought we were pretty close to maybe going a different route with our budgeting, but that will probably be discussed again tonight, so. And no, unless there are questions, I think we're ready to start formulating the 2012 work plan.
Does Dennis have anything to suggest or offer at this time?
The only thing I'd, I'd mention is, I always think it's...
You might want to come up to a microphone. You probably would have to use Dean's, I guess, or come up to the front.
Sonny's not here.
Oh yeah, Sonny's not here either.
Tell it to John.
The only thing I'd mention is, it's always important, I think, for Commissioners to spend the time reviewing the last year's accomplishments. It always surprises me, even though, you know, we're in it during the year, it always surprises me to see how much this county actually accomplishes in a given year, and I think it's always very useful to go back and look at it. I think it kind of puts things into perspective, so I hope you'll do that. You know, later, as you get through this, I'm sure one of the things you're going to talk about is the septic treatment plant, and where that's going to go, and I guess we have some follow-up comments on that, when, if, if and when you want to discuss that issue. Bill and Dean and I have some thoughts on that one as well, that's something I'd mention.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. So we will, I guess, begin the process of having everyone write down what they think are their feelings and issues on things they would like to have addressed for 2012, or issues they think that will, that will need to address in '12 that would be coming forward. Is that correct?
Right. Do you want, I, what we could do is, we could just start, just for the sake of time, I could start just taking them as, as they, as people introduce them?
Why don't you, I would suggest, maybe we give the commission 10 minutes or so to write down their ideas, and then we'll just, as we normally do, we'll just start at one end of the table, and just go around, and then we'll just continue to go around until everyone's, has, has completed their list. Why don't we do that? Let's take it like a 10-minute work, work session here on this suggestion.
How come you got blue? We all have black.
I don't know.
Oh, that reminds me, John. You give me these little white stickers. You don't want to know what I say?
I'll be able to see them. I was next worst.
No, I was, I'll put a little black mark on them so you can see them.
Some of us got more than others.
Yeah, I got, I got looking at it, and it's the same couple of colors of paper, and I thought, well...
You got more?
John don't care what I say.
That's just because you're a girl.
No. I actually thought this would be funny before the meeting, but now, I don't know, I just had lots.
Because I haven't looked at mine. Oh, I see. Now I know what Herb was talking about, I'm missing all the fun.
Yeah, everybody should have at least 10 dots.
You get five.
No more, no less. You get one, one dot per issue item.
I do think pink is appropriate for me, thank you.
Staple this on the wall for the extra.
Oh, golly darn.
That's right.
Reuse, recycle.
Ah ha, there it is.
Cat licenses.
Yeah, I see he's got this. Didn't you see him drawing?
Oh my god. I won't have enough dots to do all my... Sheriff's here, huh? Better put that one away.
Sheriff's here. Yes, he's got that. I know. Look.
This was on last year's, right?
Oh no, no, no. Save the train.
There you go.
We are not, we are... In spite of all this frivolity, I, I know we're going to accomplish things. I'm sorry, mine are so serious. Mine, yes.
What's that?
Two-year budget.
Send that to Congress.
Needs to be done.
You know, if you get it done, we can start.
I know, is everyone waiting for me?
Yes.
Except for Sonny.
All right. I should call him, I didn't forget.
Dad, are you writing paragraphs, or dissertations, or what?
More days off.
You know, I got three words here.
John, did you take Sonny's stickers?
I know, you got pictures.
No, I didn't.
Okay, so they're around here somewhere.
They're right in that...
Check it out, they're very close to mine.
What, what color are they?
Yellow.
Yellow with a dash.
Yellow.
Of pink.
I of course have, I have girly pink, female pink. Now, did you pick these colors on purpose?
No, I did not put those together.
Really?
Administration Office assisted with gathering the materials for the meeting.
Okay, I think I got most of mine done, unless I think of something while I'm doing it. How's everybody else doing? Everybody got this complete?
We're done, we're waiting for you.
Got a couple anyway.
All right, how's everyone to start? You want to start with Herb, or you want to start with me?
Well, why don't we start and just go around, but I'd just let you know that I'm going to be walking, and I'll put them up on the wall so I won't have a mic.
Try to identify what yours is.
So we'll just kind of have everybody take a turn, introduce one, and we'll consolidate as we go, or adjust.
Yep.
Mine is to increase the conservation district partnership. The, the funding that we give today is paltry to what the services that they're providing for our community. Preserving the environment.
Well, is this the time for questions?
No, let's just put them up.
Okay.
Yeah.
What are we going to cut to do that? I don't argue, it's a valuable thing, but...
We do a round-robin? See if they're doing all of this at once.
All right. Alright.
Okay. Well, mine was budgeting for outcomes and...
Same.
Yeah, I have a budgeting for outcomes one.
I have a results-based budgeting, so here.
What I would suggest when you put those up there is... What does that mean when you say budgeting for outcomes?
Well, based on the last proposal that was tendered...
You want to continue on what was in the...
At the board meeting.
Like the 2011 work plan or...
I will just clarify for any viewers that might be watching that it's the idea of starting with the outcome and then figuring out the budget for it rather than having a department and then figuring out what the department's going to do and then figure out how you're going to pay for it. So start with the outcome in mind when we make our budget.
That's exactly correct. And some departments can do it together.
I had a similar one, I don't know.
Save the train, no.
We're not talking about the train.
Okay, I'll save that for next...
I do have a joint meeting with the Road Commission, so I think that's kind of along the same lines.
I have Road Commission integration.
So let's...
I have others on the Road Commission, so that's out.
What I would suggest on... Commissioner Richardson on enhanced transportation infrastructure, what is it that you're kind of focused on in that?
Well, I mean, I think when you're talking about enhancing infrastructure, you're talking money, so we're talking funding really.
Okay.
Or better ways to approach the funding and all that.
Okay.
Hopefully the governor can figure this thing out.
The Road Commission did look at...
I have more hope for this one than I did the last one.
I would put that on safety maybe?
I'd put it in safety.
Or economic well-being, either one.
Probably.
Yeah, okay. That also ties into next mission. Collaboration.
I agree with his one on save the train.
Yeah.
Examine the staff levels of all courts.
Fiscal responsibility.
Fiscal responsibility.
That's a good one, Larry.
Like we can have any effect on it.
Come to judge.
Reduce impact of government on the citizens by zoning, overplanning, taxes. Find a place for that one.
Say that again?
That's item number eight.
Reduce the impact on the citizens.
We don't have much to do with any of them.
Well, I had reevaluate government barriers to business development, is that kind of the idea?
No. Actually, yes it is. It is.
That's streamlining our permit process.
Yeah, I think it's economic well-being, I don't know that it's health, but that is exactly what I'm talking about, reducing barriers, because I mean ultimately the zoning is restrictive often and we can encourage at least the townships, we can't tell them anything, but we can encourage them to.
Dean, this is one I think you're just... I'm not sure you're going to feel warm and fuzzy about. Get rid of AS 400, full cost our services.
Well, I'm going to take a stab at that one over here.
Yeah, I think it's fiscal. That's fine.
John will, when he's reviewing these, will make a... Probably classify them when he has all of them.
But you will confirm that we do not full cost, will you not?
We currently do not full cost, but there are very few governments that do.
But it's so important to provide value. Tell us where we are actually spending.
Don't disappoint me.
It's the cat.
The cats down lower.
Septage financing from Commissioner Thomas.
Alright, I have one of those.
I have one of the septic.
Hang on there. That's a better way of phrasing it.
Continue to work with the BPW and G5 on the revenue and operational issues on the septic treatment plan, county ownership of septic land.
That wasn't me.
For now, put those under the environment. That's where it has been historically.
The county ownership should be its own, because it's totally separate.
You don't want to buy it, Larry?
No. Well, we're trying to find some other people who do, that want...
Privatizing. Even better.
Buying the money, I'd buy it.
Trying to find some hardware stores that want to diversify. Yep. Alright. I guess I'm just going to do this one here, and I say this every year, so it's just like his cat license. Continuing how to focus, better education to the public, possibly looking at a joint public information officer, joint with the city, or have our own public information officers, such as the Health Department has a public information officer, and that person could serve all county departments.
Access to services.
In fact, Benton County... Dennis? Benton County has a public informations officer.
Propaganda officer?
Yeah. Not yet.
Two-year budget.
Right here. What? What? Anybody else cheering on two-year budget?
Of course. I saw a rate, I didn't have to.
Hard to do when you don't know what revenues are going to be.
Yes, you can.
Oh boy, let's see.
I guess you can assume that'll be further than your...
I don't know where to go. I'll put the... Reevaluate government barriers to business development.
We would've spent $625,000 out of this.
Reevaluate government barriers to business development.
I think that's real.
I don't believe that.
That would remain to be seen.
A lot of big words to just say, leave them alone.
It may be true, but...
Well, that's my opinion. I'm entitled. I'm a girl.
They are just a guide.
Reexamine Sheriff Department's school liaisons.
Oh, I like that.
Save.
I like that idea.
We have had no complaints, have we?
No.
Not yet.
Evaluate the usage and potential of each county park by the Parks and Recreation Board. Put that under preserve the environment.
Could you read that one again?
It's evaluate the usage and potential of each county park by the Parks and Recreation Board.
Okay, I have on refocus or restructure parks department, so that's about the same thing.
Well, I've got one that says restructure the Parks Department as well, but...
We have that at the...
I think they are a little different, because this is more of a...
You're saying consolidate.
I've got a little different idea about it, so...
Yeah, but mine, Dean, is utilization and recognizing the potential of each park and have the Parks and Rec Board do that. It really doesn't have anything to do with...
Innovation.
The Parks Department per se. It's, you know, if a business person owned all those parks, they certainly wouldn't let them set idle and not utilize the potential of it.
Would that have any other fiscal responsibility more so than...
I think so, yeah.
We have...
Or access to services.
We have said a... Larry? We have said a... We did put forward a plan to do business plans for each individual park.
Yeah, but I'd like to see Disney World at one park and, you know...
No, I understand what you're saying, but in effect, that's what the Parks Board has said, is we want business plans for each individual park. And it's... The state of Michigan did it years ago. State of Michigan has a business plan for every single park in the state of Michigan, and it's working.
Yeah.
Okay.
Except for the ones they closed.
That's why they closed them.
Didn't work.
We need a firing range somewhere.
So Larry, was that then... So you're even considering contracting out, or is that something that would be a part of that or...
No, it's utilization.
That is, yeah.
And that'd be just a separate issue.
Consolidate parks and make advisory only and bring some of those, some of the current responsibilities through our facilities department.
It's just like they're going to open a brewery.
I need to go out there.
What was that again?
Do some practice.
Consolidate parks.
Parks and facilities. Make the Parks Board advisory and then bring in the responsibilities, the use responsibilities in the facilities.
Yeah. And bring in what?
Make the use responsibilities facilities. Consolidate departments. Mr. Chairman, I have that as an item number five coming up on our agenda to talk about parks, and Jason's here also to help us to talk about North Sky and what they've done to give you more information about what's on the planning for some of the parks.
Alright.
So just to let you know.
Alright, okay.
My turn? Involve citizens at large by, I guess by special invitation, and I will tell you that Munson does this, and I just got an invitation in the mail.
This goes with and encourage higher attendance by citizens.
From Munson, to come to one of their meetings to talk about my feelings towards their plans as a resident of central neighborhood. They're inviting Kids Creek, the residents of Kids Creek. And it's my opinion that rather than just having, you know, open meetings, if you ask citizens by special invitation from the voter registration list, by district, if you invite citizens in to meet and hear what they have to say, they'll come. So I just think it would be worthwhile.
Start a plan for new jail. We don't need it now because of all the diversion, but that doesn't mean the bad guys are going away.
My turn?
Yes.
Start the 2013 budget process with the understanding it is unlikely we will not use any advance funds, any funds from our general fund and the projected impact on the tax tribunals.
Pretty sure I know where that one goes.
Good guess, Dean.
Continue the community collaboration funding. Collaborate on combination.
I was waiting for you to walk over here. Find more ways to collaborate and condense county police and fire services, such as joint training or anything we can think of to...
You know, I was at the civic center this week and I saw city police cars and sheriff department cars and looked in the meeting room, and there were guys in uniform basically wrestling on the floor with each other. That's kind of collaboration, correct?
Sounds like government, yeah.
Let's call the sheriff's arm bending.
Is it? Sheriff was over there bending arms?
Commissioner Richardson, renew community policing structure.
You what?
Community policing structure.
That's a good one, I like that one.
Nobody's happy for me to drive.
Talk with state reps on changing status on reapportionment, any appointments? Statues, I'm sorry.
I like that one.
We knew you would.
Yeah, the old nine to seven trick. Bill's over there in the corner laughing.
Yeah, most likely under innovation and risk taking. We may relocate that.
Get firmly taxable property back on the rolls. Sell or liquidate land we do not use.
Oh, good idea.
I have a sell surplus property.
There you go. Here's another one to go with it.
Like Whitewater.
We got that land sitting out there and we're not going to use it for anything.
Swap it.
Should be for sale.
We can't sell the whole township. I know that, you know that we better do that.
Chris, are you talking about the landfill in East Bay?
I'm talking, you know, the Whitewater property that we have.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, not East Bay, but Whitewater.
No, it's Whitewater, yeah. I mean, it's surplus property, we're not using it. Why do we own it? We don't have any plan for it in the future, it's nuts.
No, we don't.
Commissioner Thomas, employee classification.
When we can afford it.
Fiscal responsibility, I guess.
Put it under number eight.
Oh, we don't have a number eight.
Number eight.
We will put it under fiscal responsibility at this. Yeah, we'll review prior to your work plans and see where we placed it.
I still got a whole bunch. Continue to work with MAC on legislation to give counties an option to bond their unfunded defined benefit amount to a fixed amortization to stabilize county budgets throughout the state.
That's the pension...
I want to see.
Which we're currently working on.
I'm not sure where we're at with documented imaging on that, but I think we need to continue to implement that.
That's good. Because they're having too much fun with it.
I know.
Should've brought some pizza in or something, or chocolate balls.
And on that note...
Wine and cheese?
Seek ways to expand and optimize specialty courts.
Ooh.
Specialty courts.
The specialty courts.
Yeah. We've got a bunch of them now.
They keep people out of jails and they cut down on return offenders.
Yep.
They work.
Good idea.
Sell or lease the old Health Department building.
That's right in there with sell surplus property.
I have that similar one. Complete construction of a new Health Department building, sale of Garfield Road building afterward.
Establish a new county Aloya Child's Holiday.
I like that idea.
We'll just hold that one up. Compress committee structure.
I like that idea.
We could have a training day for it.
It's a new training day.
A training day instead of Martin Luther King Day.
Empower employees.
Yep.
I like the empower commissioners.
Honorably.
Rob Hench.
Well, honestly, I believe that results-based budgeting does that, but I don't think we do it.
I don't know where we should hang this or not.
Oh, come on.
You gotta put it up, I mean.
Cat licenses.
It's a yearly thing.
Is that what you mean?
Hey, you know, there are municipalities now that are charging for cat licenses.
Boy, they put chips in them.
They should. Cats cost almost as much as dogs do in this county.
They put microchips in cats in some counties so they can track them.
You know, it just dawned on me.
I look at it as a health issue.
You gave us color-coded sticky dots so we can't put more than one sticky dot on it without getting caught. Oh, you tricky thing.
It took you that long to figure that one out?
It's the only one that's to find that out, figure that out.
Like, oh, the mic goes out.
I want to vote on five things, all five.
Yeah, all five.
All five bulletins.
Rob, I look at it as a health issue because they have diseases and nobody has to put, nobody has to put any shots in them.
Yeah, you've heard of cat scratch fever.
We have had that before, so I'm sure we'll get that.
All right.
The thing is, he's serious. I know you are.
Continue to work with MAC with legislation on having an option for counties to have elected road commissioners by district, which we are getting very, very close on.
Oh, that's a good.
This is the, having road commissioners elected by district.
Yeah. Herb?
Yeah.
Next, Michigan, economic development.
There goes the park, save the train.
Save the train.
Save the train. If the Parks Commission can't figure it out, maybe we don't get a Parks Commission. Save the train.
Now, I'd go with it if what Fleece, you know, if what Fleece says with government not running it, I'm good with that.
Privatize it, I'm all for it.
I got three more.
Contract or lease out Twin Lakes.
Oh, I like that one.
I do, too.
Yeah, I like that one.
I'm done, unless I can think of something else.
I got three, so you can lay them all out at once.
Why don't you give me one of yours?
Oh, they gotta come over there? Okay. Make a decision on the county surveyor position, elected or bid out the process.
It's already on the agenda.
Reduction of committee assignments for commissioners. Would that go with the compressing of the committees, because that's essentially what I was getting at?
Could be.
Would you guys afraid of hard work or what?
I was looking at expanding.
Anything we can do to protect septic haulers from government monopolies.
Well, I think you need to take the cap off that.
That's what we want to do.
You bet. Take the cap off.
Everything you see.
Take the cap off.
Less government.
You got my slap on that.
Less government, yep.
You'll be slapping five with me on that.
All right, that's where I'm going.
Sometimes I got four knees.
I know that.
Okay.
I agree, I, yeah.
All right, this is where I instantly become unpopular. End Commissioner Bennie's.
Good luck with that one.
What's a Bennie?
Benefit, health, insurance. I'm done.
I'm done.
Well, these are just givens, but.
But you want to sticky dot them anyway?
Yeah, because it's going to take a lot of our time this, in '12. Complete, support and complete the internal search process for the new county administrator position, including an orientation process with all departments, county commissioners, and community leaders. And then my last one was to complete county commissioner and all other elected officials' salary compensation for the next election cycle through 2013, '14. Lush.
Just my.
Normal cough.
My nasty lungs. My weak lungs.
Well, so first one was under innovation and risk taking.
Okay.
And then the second one for the elected officials' salaries.
That's nice.
Back over here.
Really, which one do you like the most?
Solve the funding of jail mental health services.
Oh, I like that one.
Either rewrite the agreement or.
I like that one.
Enforce the current one, because right now we're paying twice.
Yep, I like that one.
Oh, jeez, I look that bad. It is, it's not a good, it's not a good life.
Any others?
The only thing I might ask as Chair is Dennis, do you see anything coming up in '12 that you, that hasn't been mentioned that you feel important that we at least mention in terms of an issue that probably would be impacting us in '12?
I can't, I can't think of anything like that.
Okay, all right.
Well, one thing, when you asked that question.
Yes.
What about the property along the dams? We need to make some kind of decision.
Disposition.
You got it, it says sell excess property.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
You probably want something separate.
I do.
Disposition.
Why don't you write that, dams?
Property. Disposition, how about that? We have to decide whether it stays parkland, whether it goes to give it up, sell it, whatever.
Disposition, whatever.
We have to make a decision here.
I think we'll find out.
Oops.
We have to.
Thank you.
Be nice.
We have to keep this parkland.
But we, you know.
Because we've got the flowage rights.
Yeah.
So we get 10 dots this year.
With the flowage rights along, with that is the high water. I don't know what it is. I'd wait till we see how far it goes in court.
They're not going to.
We know it's going to.
They're not.
They don't have anything to sue.
Okay, I think what we.
That's why I say they're not going to.
Before we go through and vote on these, we, one thing that may be helpful, and I don't know because we don't have that many up there really, is, is to kind of go through and consolidate some of them or clarify any of these. If you'd like to go through that, we can, or if we can, if you'd prefer, we could go right to the voting process.
Why don't we vote, and then if you see some similarities in the dots, then we can go through that.
Okay, well, you have a packet, gives you 10 sticky dots.
Maybe you have to find out if anybody has any clarifying questions.
Yeah, what I suggested.
Chris had something she wanted to talk about at the beginning, you said, Larry said, wait until they're all up there. I didn't know if anybody.
I have since forgotten what that was, Dennis.
Well, then, if you want.
And that's a woman's prerogative.
Yes, it is.
I'm wondering if this would be an opportunity for public comment before we start to vote on any, any of these issues.
Sure. Does any member of the public wish to make any remarks about any of the items that are on the board or have any other suggestions they would ask the commission to consider at this time? If you do have public comment, please stand to the front of the microphone and state your name, address, and then your remarks.
I, I do have a question for, for the sheriff when we're.
Okay, all right. Let's open it up to the public, anybody? All right, Commissioner Maxvay has a question for the sheriff.
Sheriff, Grand Travis County population has been on the rise. Your staffing has not been on the rise. Yeah, I guess, I'm not exactly sure how to, how are you doing and do you foresee a need for additional staffing?
Always.
In the immediate future? Because, you know, from my perspective, I sit here for public safety. I mean, I want people to feel safe when they walk the streets at night, take, take their dogs for a walk, whatever. I think that's one of our key roles as, as a county board, but I. Because I'll put something up there if you think that something needs to be done in the immediate future, or can you give me an idea where we're going here?
Well, you know, we can't, alls we can do is look at the population figures and maybe can just assume that more people brings more crime. I don't know who, who would be able to do that effectively. Couple of the comments from, I think Commissioner Richardson on revise or reexamine the sheriff's department school liaison officers. In that case, we'd be happy to do that and come up with a plan to say, okay, we want to, we want to do this. I know we've talked about if, if this was to start up again, it would have a different look. It'd have the same focus, the same principles, but a little bit different look on, on how it was operated. And when we went through that process a couple of years ago, we looked at the possibility of having two school liaison officers split between four schools instead of four at, at four schools, okay? And that'd be something that we would love to look at and come up with maybe some kind of a, a proposal for you for, if that's what he had in mind, to get some liaison officers back in the school.
How is that going?
Well, it's, it's handled a lot differently right now. As you know, there's, cars have to be sent to these schools and some of the things that we would handle in the past, I think are being handled internally.
Okay.
By, by the school personnel, but there's still, there's, there's not an officer there. We probably would be busier, they would probably turn over more complaints and issues to us if we were there. Some of them are just probably not being, being taken care of like they were in the past. How the schools are handling them and what those issues might be, I'm not real sure of. So if there's something specific, we are looking at ways to, I don't want to say distribute our officers, but we're, we're now getting an idea of where the officers are and what they're doing and able to refocus some of their efforts in, in some different areas. And we won't be fully versed in what we're doing with, with, with what, actually what the officers are doing for a few more months. But the issue is we, we have a certain number of positions, but typically there's always one or two people not there because they're retiring or they're moving on to bigger and better things. So although we may have a complement or positions for 50 people, very, very seldom, if ever, do we have 50 people working on their own. It's typically maybe 47 or 48, depending on the, the turnover rate. And if somebody's sick or injured, there could be a long period of time. So that, that, we're not fully staffed, and by fully staffed, I mean people all, not in training, but all on their own. And that happen, that, that time is, is, is very rare when we have that. So to have, to guarantee 50 people working all the time, obviously you'd need more than that, because our history shows that it's just a constant process of filling holes and vacancies and, and interviewing and hiring and training people just, it never seems to stop. It's not like 10 or 20, it's one or two, sometimes up to three people where we have those vacancies. And that cuts into our ability to do the job, and we, we've then become more reactive, and we're just now seeing a, a time where we might be turning the corner just a little bit and be able to have a little bit of flexibility and be a little more proactive than reactive in what we do. And in some respects, try to be ahead of the game in, in our activities with, with our patrol activities. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that during the budget talks last year, Commissioner Lemkow mentioned that there would be, maybe it'd be some use of money for a couple more officers, so I haven't forgot that yet.
I didn't say that, I said, if I had the savings, I would rather put the savings into the safety of our community.
So I don't know if that answered your question or not, but if there are some things you, you know.
It, it really does, yeah.
Would, would like to be specific on.
Dennis has a, asked to be addressed, and then I have a, a question, and then I guess we can then go to Commissioner Gilman if he has a question.
For me?
Yeah, if it relates to public safety.
Yeah, I, I guess I would like to say that I think the sheriff's done an excellent job of using the limited resources he has in trying to address the issues as best he can. We spend a lot of time in our meetings with him explaining to me how he's redirecting staff in ways to try to, you know, manage the most difficult parts of the problem. So I think he should be applauded for that. I did want to point out, though, that I'm not quite sure that population growth or decrease is really the appropriate measurement to measure whether you need more police services. I think you have to look at crime rates, I think you have to look at those incidents, and, and really that's the measurement that would probably indicate to you, if you see that your crime rates are going up, that, you know, you're having great, much, you know, larger number of complaint calls into 911, that's probably a better indicator, at least in my opinion.
I have a question for the sheriff. Corrections officers, are you up to, up to full staff, are you still having the turnover issues and, you know, the ongoing issues of attracting, retaining corrections officers? And it's a very difficult job because you're dealing with the worst of the worst and.
We're in the process right now of hiring a corrections officer to, to fill a vacancy.
Okay.
We just filled the vacancy because someone we hired didn't work out.
Okay.
And that, that seems to be a little steadier in the turnover rate than the, than the law enforcement side.
Okay.
That just is a little more steady, but, you know, last year I think we hired two people, this year we're in the process of hiring one, you know, I could go back.
Okay.
It just, there also, it's just a continually moving process, it just seems like we're always in that, we, we can't get out of that wave. I don't know if there's an answer to it or not, but with that many people, yeah, you're going to have some turnover.
Yeah, and it's a difficult job being a corrections officer, you're, you're dealing with the worst of the public at the worst time in their particular moment, and.
And we've tried to do some things to speed up that process in, in the hiring. We have, I think Captain Hall told me for this corrections officers vacancy, now they don't necessarily all meet the requirements, but we had 209 applications to.
Wow.
Look at, okay? And some of those, you know, may not meet the qualifications, but people do apply and it takes a long time, so trying to figure out how we can shorten that process, how we can, you know, if there's going to be that turnover, how it can be quicker.
Commissioner Gilman, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that you'd, you'd mentioned the, in turning the corner to a point where you're starting to be able to be proactive, and, and if I, if I recall, that was as a part of some of the staff restructuring that you did, and I thought that that was, that's good to hear that, that it's starting to work for you and make it, make it so you can do those kind of things, so.
We're able to, yeah, we're in the process of, like I said, a little bit of a time management thing here, and we're seeing, okay, maybe if we, we might have a little extra time here so we can kind of shift our focus with a couple of people onto, onto something else. And we just started that a couple of months ago, we don't know how it's working, but we're trying that to see if we can't, just maybe we just might be turning that corner a little bit, so hopefully that's the case.
All right, great. Any other questions for the sheriff? All right, thank you.
Glad I came.
All right, where's John? Oh, I'm sorry, member of the public.
My name's Andy Merrick, I live at 2875 East Railroad Avenue. Commissioner Maxvay brought up a good point, and I would love to see the reinstatement of the liaison officer. Bullying has been an issue here in the Travis City area public schools, my son was bullied, we went to the school board and got some changes made to the bullying policy, but there's no, I think the lack of an officer's presence in the school may not be the same deterrent as having an. as having an officer actually there. And looking at increasing the amount of officers that we have in the county may not be a bad idea because it's not the same community that we were 20 years ago. There's more people, there's bigger incidents. We didn't have shootouts at the local pharmacy 20 years ago. We're starting to see some of this, and maybe looking at increasing the sheriff's department staffing may not be a bad idea to at least look at and examine as a possibility. Thank you.
All right, good. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the public? Okay, and we'll turn it back to John.
Well, it's up to you right now to go ahead and vote.
Are we ready to vote? Okay.
Let's go.
Yay.
I feel a bit like Survivor there.
I have pleasers in my shivers, and I have to stretch my foot.
Sorry. It's the best I can do.
And I'll come back to my...
She's in that chair nicely.
School.
I put this on your shirt, I don't want to ruin your show.
Not full staff at dispatch right now either, I think.
There is a little potential.
They don't even give me...
Two-year half.
We're doing two-year.
John will.
They love it.
So they do it so like I'm going out there.
They do that.
No, it's already...
They may have no idea I'm doing two-year budget every year.
Well, we don't two-year budget, they don't touch it.
For two years.
County has...
Nine counties that do it.
I'm saying after you get done with budget, what you'll end up doing.
Focus in five.
I guess I won't just want to...
They're about three things.
That's another thing, they bonded their retirements.
Yeah, legally and in order.
So they bonded it.
Yeah, but it wasn't as bad as ours, but they bonded it.
I'd say it's working great.
I'd say it's working great there, like 100%.
You know what?
So I'll share with you anything I know.
It's a long-term stipend.
We edited all your...
Send it over to you.
We edited all your...
It was really cool.
I got...
It's pretty cool.
Do you realize how stupid that's going to be when I'm actually in Corvallis?
It sounds cool when I'm here. When I'm there, it's like, so what's this?
But it sounded like the time.
Yeah, I get it.
It's like, man, this is really cool. And everybody told me, they go, it's really cool.
I get it.
I'll be with Bill in Corvallis, and John in Corvallis, Dean in Corvallis.
Hey, they made a decision out there today.
Issues with buildings, buying buildings.
I know. Yeah, the cat.
You can do that.
No, my ex-girlfriend was on the cat.
Yeah.
It's got enough to make it a priority right now.
It'll be on the list.
The public works guy's in charge of facilities, surveying, interpreting, road commission.
Interpretation. What color are you?
That's where CH... CMH2 Hill? Is that what it is? CH2 Hill?
CH2 Hill.
Anyway, that's where their corporate offices are. Big office in that. Yeah, the corporate offices are in... In fact, that's the building they want to buy. They want to buy the old CH2. What's that? Richard Phillips. But he's been in... He was in Denver for like eight months. They ran out of work, so he's working to buy, doing risk management. And he goes there for two months, gets over two weeks, goes back for two months, and he 's in like a military compound, you know, he's not allowed out. He's in there for two months and then flies home.
The antiquities.
That's a big money thing. What's that? Oh, my God, could you imagine? No one else.
Looks like the train bit the dust.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, please.
I think it's a little...
I just need a light cut off.
I know that.
There you go.
Yeah.
Did you see my tits?
Hey, Chris. Hey, Chris.
Someone you put down, sell the property we don't need for...
Surplus property.
Sell surplus property.
It's cool now.
John, I'll help clean up stuff on there.
Forgot that one.
Yeah. And we sewed the stitches together. So now I can go around like this. So let's go back.
It's a little...
Probably hits the edge of the last picture.
Yeah.
Guarantee it does get more usage than pool or...
But I guarantee you.
You add in the lots.
I could be wrong, but you email me.
I don't know because she doesn't...
The second picture turned out to be the better one, didn't it?
Yeah, it did. Yeah.
The one where they're kind of looking over.
Yeah. No, thank you for doing that.
Well, it's not perfect, but it actually surprises me.
You know, it's surprising how well those take in terms of photograph.
Yeah.
Downloading and sending them out, how good they are.
Yeah.
It's not actually really...
Oh, sometimes, sometimes.
It's not like a high-end camera.
No.
It's not built that way, but they sure do take nice pictures.
Just a little sea moss sat up behind the stuff.
All right. Where's John? He's supposed to do the ad up here for us.
Just tell him to turn. Are you sure you want to drop this? Boy, you're kidding me. So anyway, yeah, so I'll be...
Now, let me go find John wherever he's at.
Take every precaution.
I do the difference.
You want to start counting them right now and then do the review?
No, it wasn't the one. It seems like they eat...
Right there at 21.
Three other kids.
Yeah, they...
God. Well, I'll tell you, last night, that hockey game was so bad.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I've been watching. I would like to.
Larry and the cable. You ever watch that?
He's just a who.
You know what he did last night?
He gets paid to have fun.
You know what he did last night? Something. The cash for the tigers.
Yeah, I remember.
Was that she? She just pulled them up. That's when I quit watching. I didn't need to see that. I just sat there watching and it hurt me.
Right.
I hope you see all those little white ones. I'm going to be checking.
Give them weight now.
What have you done on that?
Hard to see.
Yeah. You see in the little...
Yeah.
Little... That's why you give me a white one. They wouldn't know what I was saying. Jesus, I got so much work done today.
I wish I could have gotten some work done today.
I worked up.
I got a full day tomorrow.
Doing Wayne Schmidt's deal and then chamber dinner. Cog meeting. Three hours up in the shop. A five-day dishes and wash position.
Well, that's three plates and two glasses.
No, no, no. And I did about five more. I don't even know what I'm doing. This came up pretty good.
Yeah, you did a nice job.
I had a... Well, I couldn't get in the laundry, so I said, wait a minute. I didn't have any clean...
Poor dick.
That's why I had to dress up. I had to wash this morning.
Poor guy.
You gotta even cook something?
No.
Stir fry, yeah, you bet.
One of these nights, when you got nothing going on, you're inviting me over to the office if I wrap them up around.
I haven't been in there.
Yep. Now, do you have them listed by priority? That's what we're going to want to know.
You got one, six, five, four.
Getting in a bunch of threes. All right, okay, let's just go through them.
You saw both of them on the cat license, huh?
Now, the one thing I'd like to get clarified is...
You didn't do that. There's two of them.
I didn't see this one. This one's disqualified.
She voted.
That came off of her envelope.
Not that one.
Well, I don't know.
Don't take it off of there. You didn't even put yours up. Yeah, I did. Right above the cat's head. Well, I'm not going to do it anymore. To hell with it. That's 16 years. In that time, those first licensed cats would be logged on. He wouldn't count your... The thing on your sort of cat license. Wouldn't count yours because you took it off your envelope. I didn't know I was working with a bunch of cheaters. Put another one there on the... There. You keep doing that, we'll have an oph. Where'd they go? Where'd they go? I don't know. Hmm. This is what they did to me last year. Screwed the numbers up.
Okay, we are going to convene. If everyone can take their seat.
Sykes got a cat.
And if we can have Commissioner Henchel join us at the Honorable Rob Henchel Chair and Table. And we'll have John Sykes give us an overview of the voting.
Sure. There was... So we did some, a little bit of consolidation, though. So even though some of the votes might have been on different sheets, there are some similarities where we saw we kind of consolidated some of them. And certainly, you have to remember, this is a work plan. There's going to be... This is going to change as the year goes through, and you're going to make some adjustments. And it's really about setting the stage for which are those issues that you want to have further discussion on. So I wouldn't get caught up in too much of the detail on some of these so much as it's really just setting the stage for more investigation on that particular issue. We did have two of them that came in at six. Those were the two top vote-getters. And those are the issue of surplus property received six votes, which is over under fiscal responsibility. There's also, the other one was...
You keep doing that, we'll have an opho. Where'd they go? Where'd they go? I don't know. This is what they did to me last year. Screwed the numbers up.
Okay, we are going to convene. If everyone can take their seat.
Psych has got a cat.
And if we can have Commissioner Henchel.
That's right, I do.
Join us at the Honorable Rob Henchel Chair and Table. And we'll have John Psych give us an overview of the voting.
Sure, there was, so we did some, a little bit of consolidation though. So even though some of the votes might have been on different sheets, there are some similarities where we saw we kind of consolidated some of them. And certainly, you have to remember, this is a work plan. There's gonna be, this is gonna change as the year goes through and you're gonna make some adjustments. And it's really about setting the stage for which are those issues that you want to have further discussion on. So I wouldn't get caught up in too much of the detail on some of these so much as it's really just setting the stage for more investigation on that particular issue. We did have two of them that came in at six. Those were the two top vote getters. And those are, the issue of surplus property received six votes, which is over under fiscal responsibility. There's also, the other one was talking about the road commission's structure under collaborate on common issues. So those two were the top. We did have a few fours. If we go to the left there over at Preserve Environment, we did have four votes for contract or is it contract out Twin Lakes? There was four also on there in terms of the dam property in terms of what doing, what to do with the dam property under.
The property aligning the.
Aligning the river. Exposed land. Under safety, there was the four votes that was for this school liaisons from the Sheriff's Department. And then moving across, I believe we had one more somewhere else.
Those, that's a three now, the school liaisons?
We had four votes for that.
Four.
Yeah, these are four votes. I haven't really.
Okay.
Took into context the three votes. There's another one.
Access to Services had a four.
Yeah, and I think that's evaluate. That was Commissioner Fleese's comment about evaluating the usage of the parks. And I believe that is the last of the four.
So we had four fours and two sixes, correct?
Correct.
And would you leave those up for a little while? Because I want to, you know, I want to think about it because I might move one of my pink sticky dots.
Well, I.
Well, we can't do that now.
No, I'm not gonna do it right now. But I mean, I mean, just after the meeting, I want to just, you're not gonna take them down right away. You'll give me five or 10 minutes, won't you?
Now, the vote's the vote.
No?
This is just general.
Your decision.
Can't have a.
It changes minds.
No, I guess.
Can be moving stuff around.
Are you ready to vote in Chicago?
Okay.
I mean, I'm gonna prepare a report that will have all of these on here regardless. And I'm not gonna drop off the ones that only had one or two. I think you need to record that. So I will include all the comments.
But I'm looking at one of my votes and I'm thinking of moving it, so that's why.
But, you know.
Too late.
If I could, if I could just interject here is that, you know, as you recall in previous years, once we got this in a draft report summary from John and then it came to, for example, an RMA committee, the next RMA committee, the commission has time to take a look at it from a full perspective and to give some thought. And we have had cases over the last several years where the board as a whole has agreed to shift one or two of the items either higher or lower. And there was a consensus on that. So this is really the first stage in terms of throwing out issues and getting a gauge. And I think that the validation part, if that's the right word to say, is to have John provide us a draft. And then we'll have, we'll present it at, like, for example, an RMA committee for next month, if you have time to complete it by then. And then we'll review those and then we can make judgmental calls. And if Commissioner Max Bauer thinks that she might want to shift some of those things another way, she might want to say, well, you know, I think this has more importance now that I've given thought about it. And then, you know, with the board can make a consensus decision about, you know, if we want to move something up or down the line.
Right. And, you know, you have to remember, this is just a guide for yourself as you're going through and basically saying, these are the top areas you want to work on. It's not to preclude other issues that might come before you. You are gonna have other issues that come in front of you. So this is just to say that of your time spent and your energy and efforts this year, these are the areas that you want to emphasize on and see how you go through the year and accomplish those.
How many threes did we have?
I did not tally those.
There were a lot of them?
Yeah. One, two.
Not a lot.
If you can hit me with the threes. If there weren't too many. Was there four?
Six, I think.
There were six threes?
Or seven.
Seven?
Are there, are there two over there on number seven? Actually, there's only, there's only one. No, there are two because we had the budget-based results. And then consolidate parks and. Well, there's five over here, so that's seven total.
There were seven threes, okay. Well, we'll just get that in the report then.
Yeah, I will, I will actually include all of those on, in the report just for the record and so you have that documented.
All right. So, John, does that complete the process that we had intended on tonight?
Yep, that's, that's it. I will get you a report for RMA Committee meeting next month.
All right. Next, we have under, unless anybody else has any questions regarding the process we just went through.
I have one, I have one question.
Yes.
Since you know by the color who voted for what, are you gonna, you will keep a record of that?
No, no.
Uh, it's up to you.
Well, I just wondered because, I mean, in case, for instance, Commissioner Max Bauer wanted to change your vote to say, you know, I voted that, for that before, but I'd rather.
Well, it's all right. I mean, I, I pretty much know what I voted for. But I'm.
That's a lot of work. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it's important to have the color coded.
It's not important to me.
It's not that hard. I can do that, but it's, I don't, I wasn't planning on that.
Okay, yeah, I just soon not, I just soon leave it out. Take some pictures. And then we will move on to, are you, um, under new business? And Commissioner Lemko wanted to give us an update on some parks issues.
Yeah, I think it's rather interesting because issues and trends brought up, Parks and Recreation Departments seek new funding. Cities expect resources to dwindle in the coming years. It's an article that was written. And then I had an opportunity to meet with the school and Jason and North Sky to talk about their, what they have done with North Sky to look at where they are gonna go for parks. And I would like to call upon Jason to come in and give us a little overview about that, if you don't mind. Because he's more knowledgeable about it. But, and I had given it to Dennis and with Dennis leaving, it's gonna be kind of hanging in there. So I thought it would be important for us to look at this and kind of decide where we're gonna go in the future with our parks. And seeing that some of the issues up there already leading to this, I could see that it's a, it's a topic that needs to be discussed. So if you don't mind, Jason?
Yeah, and Jason, there's a, I just got notice there's a workshop session that's supposed to be regionally, regional in nature. I don't know if we're sponsoring it or if we're just attending it. If you could just make some remarks about that.
I'll, I'll try and hit on it all. So I think it's appropriate and I appreciate Commissioner Lemko adding Parks and Recreation Collaboration to your agenda. It's interesting to come tonight to talk about this. And in looking at the goals that you have here, some type of collaborative effort for Parks and Recreation, not just with, or from Grand Traverse County's perspective, but with the townships, with the Parks and Recreation providers, you know, TCAPs, or excuse me, T-Bays, American Legion, Little League, GTHA, these individual Parks and Recreation program providers, that type of collaboration would really help preserve the environment from the parks' perspective. It would definitely promote the health and economic well-being considering the impact that soccer tournaments have on our hotel industry as well as the proactive health improvement that all of our facilities have on the community. It would definitely be a collaborative effort. It may not necessarily be innovative because this is a, this is a strong trend within the Parks and Recreation industry throughout our state. As funding continues to get cut to smaller communities, even to bigger ones, they're exploring other ways for different types of millages, different types of funding mechanisms and different type of, different types of intergovernmental collaboration. It may not be innovative, but in our community could definitely be risk-taking. It would definitely open up a very segmented portion of our community with all of the individual Parks and Recreation providers, all the different locals, local units of government. It would definitely pull together a variety of different services that, quite frankly, a large portion of our community knows nothing about. You know, for a new family moving to this community, where is their kid gonna play soccer? You know, if, I look at myself having a new child at home and if I weren't the Parks and Recreation Director and she wants to play soccer someday, there's no reason for me to know that T-Bays exists. And that, that's a shame as people move to our community that they don't know where to find these Parks and Recreation services. And from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, it would, depending on how a Parks and Recreation Authority would be set up, it would definitely be something that would be much more responsible throughout our community, not just for the citizens of Grand Traverse County or the citizens of Long Lake Township or the, the parents that have their kids in a GTHA program, but fiscally responsible for, for everyone in our community. It's really kind of come along at an interesting point. The Parks and Recreation Commission last year did a good job in establishing their first strategic plan. And one of the items they identified in that plan was to start discussing collaborative opportunities in our community, especially with the city and with TCAPs. That dovetailed nicely with an issue TCAPs was having with how they provide recreational opportunities to their students. We got together and we started discussing that issue and they really came to the county saying, hey, what can you offer for our students? We sat down and we brainstormed with the YMCA and the City of Traverse City and said, you know, the issue isn't necessarily what can we provide? The issue was what historically has not been provided to the students and the youth of Grand Traverse County and TCAP School District. So we, we got together and formed a committee that was previously called the Community Collaboration Committee. It's listed in number four there of your goals. And that committee pulled together the resources to have a needs assessment done funded by North Sky Nonprofit Network to go out to all the households in the Grand Traverse County and TCAP's attendance area to find out what households, or what individual households Parks and Recreation needs. Where we have that study and that's evolved now into a Parks and Recreation Network at the suggestion of North Sky, a network that could have an impact on the grand vision, the grand reimagining and several other major, major campaigns that are happening in our community. The third item that came into play is the president of our Parks and Recreation Commission, Pete Doran, said to me one day, he said, you know, I want to know what other Parks and Recreation Commissioners there are in our community. According to a study Russ Clark did two years ago, there are 83 different Parks and Recreation Commissioners inside Grand Traverse County. He said, you know, I don't know, I know, I know the other nine that serve with me and I don't know any others. So he suggested putting together a workshop. I said, that'd be easy enough to do. Got with the Michigan Recreation Park Association, who recently, unbeknownst to me, signed an agreement with the Land Information Access Agency here in Traverse City to develop a manual for Parks and Recreation Departments to evolve from Parks and Recreation Departments into Parks and Recreation Authorities. And the intent for MRPA was to go around the state and give presentations to a variety of different regions and ours being one of them. And that's gonna be the commission, or that's the workshop each of you are invited to on February 29th.
Okay.
That's gonna be sponsored, we're fortunate enough to have Gosling Zubach sponsor that, that opportunity. It's a free commission, or free workshop for all commissioners. All the commissioners in Grand Traverse County and Elmwood Township and members of our Parks and Recreation Network have been invited to that. There's been some discussion amongst some of the local units of government about an authority. And quite frankly, there are several tools in our arsenal, I guess, for developing a Parks and Recreation Authority depending on the needs of each of the individual communities that would be interested. That information will be shared with each of the commissioners that are able to attend on the 29th. And that should open up some good conversation and really get the ball rolling in discussing this issue that hits on six of your seven goals that this commission has outlined. And it's something that would be good for our community even beyond Grand Traverse County geographical boundaries.
All right, great, great.
So I don't know if there's any questions, but I, you know, I just feel that this is one of the issues that we've got coming at us and we ought to become more aware of what's there and what we can do and that we have some great organizations, or a great organization that is looking at how do we do it better? How do we do it and give more publicity to our community about the programs that we do provide?
Yeah, and there was like one card I forgot. And that was, and you'll have to remind us on this. The YW is doing this fundraising effort for this, for this complex that will hold supposedly two pools.
Three.
Two, two at once or three pools together?
Awesome.
So any event, we would have to discuss, you know, based on their success in fundraising and their timeline for construction and what they see in terms of how the use of their pools, how that would affect, you know, the pool at the Civic Center and whether it be a coordination effort with the Y on different programming that we would use versus theirs or would we keep ours open or not? So that may not be an 012 question based on what's going on in their fundraising effort. That might be, you know, an 013, but, but that, that might be something your Parks and Recs Commission and your workshop might talk about, so.
And that's, that's something, that's actually definitely something that's on Parks and Recreation's radar. It's something that I've already contacted Tom Van Dyne at the YMCA. They should be congratulated for the funding that they've raised and the facility that they're gonna build. But quite, and I'm not gonna sit here and say that talking about the pool and the finances related to our pool versus what the YMCA is gonna have is an importance, but quite frankly, Parks and Recreation is a much broader issue than the pool and that's, that's one small piece of the puzzle. The intent of the workshop on the 29th is to talk about the bigger picture ideas, the, more of the realignment of the organization and how they can do something differently. It likely will not get into the, relatively speaking, the minutia of talking about, specifically about swimming pool.
That'll come at a later date.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Max Bauer?
I just wanted to mention that I do, I did ask at the last Parks Commission meeting that an RFP, the subject of an RFP for the pool be put on the agenda simply because this is a different board than we had last year and I think it needs to be readdressed. What the commission is going to decide, I have no clue. But it is going to be on the February agenda.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Gilman?
Just so we don't, you know, I hate to bust up the Happy Park talk and everything. The last thing this community or any community needs is another layer of government that's unaccountable and hard to get rid of. So as far as a parks authority, I would absolutely oppose any effort in that direction. And you can take it for what it is. I'm just one man. But, you know, and looking at the big picture, you know, I'll tell you, three pools, that's impressive and they have, that is an excellent thing. I think there might be a way, if we look at it realistically, there might be a way that we as a county can work with, with them to perhaps lease time or space and maybe we can take care of this 30-year-old pool that's no longer affordable, you know, in the way that we use it. So there's a lot of things that definitely need to be taken care of in the big picture. And that's why one of the, one of the things that I had suggested, of course, is that we take the Parks Board and we turn it back into an advisory function. And, and we take some of the more rudimentary functions, the literally, the landlord situation or the, or the leasing authority and we give it to our, some of our other staff, frankly.
All right. Okay, any other questions for Jason's comments? All right, thanks, Jason. Thanks for coming.
I will give, Dennis has a copy of that survey that they did with North Sky and I'm gonna have a photocopy and put a copy in each one of your baskets for.
And if, and if you could have staff scan it and email Commissioner Henchel.
So.
That would be helpful, yes. Want to keep him happy.
The staff, the staff will take care of it.
All right. All right, that completes new business. And we will now move on to the second public comment. Does any member of the public wish to speak to the county commission? If you do, try to keep it within your three minutes or so, name, address. Seeing and hearing none, we will close public comment. And all we need is a motion to adjourn. Oh, moved by Thomas, seconded by Max Bauer?
Yes.
All in favor? Oh, it's passed. We stand adjourned.
Don't you move anything now. I want to just take one more.
Dicky Dooch.
Look at Gilman. What's he doing?
Don't change those dots, there. No changing of dots.